Good evening, everyone. This is the Township of Franklin Planning Board on, let's see, this is March the 18th, April 18th, I'm sorry, April 18th. Everyone, please rise for a flag.
................................................ Okay. Desiree, can we have the open public meeting statement, please?
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Republic of the Union's Acts in the Annual Notice of Meetings. A copy is posted on the township website and notice of this meeting is posted at Sentinel and a copy is posted at my township website.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Constantine?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Malady?
Here.
Mr. Tabouin?
Here.
And Chairman?
Here. Okay, we do have a call. There's no resolutions from the previous meeting. The minutes of the March 21st meeting. Is our motion to accept the minutes? Motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Kelly? No, no, I'm not approving the minutes. The minutes are incomplete. The motion that was raised at the last meeting by me and approved by the nine members was a too far motion and the minutes only contain one part. Secondly, there was supposed to be a letter written. Never saw the letter and that letter should be made a part of these minutes. Was it...
Oh, yeah, I did get the letter.
Was it...did it include all the parts or did it include what the motion said?
As I recall, there were like three items. I sent it to the administrator. I don't have it with me, but I sent the letter. Yeah, I sent it out to McLean. I sent it to the secretary, but I noticed a little bit of...I don't know which one it was. The latter. But I did send it.
Well, okay, well, that letter should be made a part of those minutes and the minutes.
I agree. Well, the letter wasn't written at all. The minutes were reflected in the class and then the letter would be part of the response.
Whatever, but it should be made part of...it should be documented as part of the autopsy meetings.
Mr. Chairman, with the information received, I believe it's in order for someone to make a motion to amend the minutes as reported.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes. Okay, I have a motion, second, that the minutes get amended. If I understand you correctly, that the letter that's being referred to that was sent to the township committee needs to be put in the following next month's...attached to next month's minutes and a copy be made of it for the members of the board. Is that satisfactory, everyone?
Yeah.
Am I okay with that? Okay, with that, we're going to approve the minutes with the exception that we're just taping. All right? I have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Do you need an amendment?
The motion is including the amendment now. The motion's to approve the minutes with the amendments that were placed on the record. All right? I need a second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay, first application is PB 2212, Byers Industrial Services. What's that? Let me take care of it. Michael, I...let's see, we've got six. I personally do business with Byers Electric. Not a lot, but I have in the past and I believe currently we're under contract for one of their buildings. Am I okay or do I need to recruit myself?
It's an ongoing like this.
It's a service contract for one building.
So if there's a request, then you do the work. I believe if there's a request, you do the work.
Yes.
Frankly, it's borderline. I don't see it as a conflict unless somebody has an objection to it.
To the board members and obviously to the applicant at the same time, I obviously within the industry do work with Byers Electric. Right now, currently, we're...I believe it's one building that we're servicing for that. So in full disclosure, I have no problem recruiting myself or hanging in there.
Mr. Chairman, you stated you have a contract with Byers Electric.
Byers Industrial.
Byers Industrial.
It's not the same?
It is the same, exactly.
It is?
Yep.
The old name was Byers?
Old name is Byers Electric.
Okay.
You had an ongoing project that were going on or there was money owed at this point, one way or the other, or something like that would be more of a concern?
Yeah. It's just servicing the local buildings. I just want to be full disclosure, that's all. That one, it's okay?
Actuitas has no objection.
Okay, very good. Then we'll continue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, good evening. Members of the board, good evening. My name is Dante Parenti. I'm an attorney with Hoffman Demusio here on behalf of Byers Industrial. And we're here this evening seeking minor site plan approval for a...the construction of a pole barn on their property on Fryes Mill Road. The pole barn is 60 by 60 feet, 3,600 additional feet. And with me tonight is Justin Woods, Vice President of Operations at Byers. I have reviewed the engineer's report and I know one of the requests of the engineers that we submit a detail of the lighting for the proposed new building, which we're happy to do, and will point it downwards as requested by your engineer. This evening, I think we need at least one C variance for lot size. The lot is 2.1 acres in size and because this is a second building, the lot is technically undersized. But I think the...we're going to be utilizing the lot in an efficient way and I think we can do so without negatively impacting the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. One correction or that I learned this evening that I'm going to point out to the engineer is that the hashed areas on the site plan are all areas of impervious surface that we'll be removing and replacing with topsoil and seed. It was believed that we were going to need two C variances this evening, one for impervious surface and one for lot size, but I think we...what we are proposing is to remove as much crushed pavement so to eliminate the need for that second C variance. We're going to be removing exactly enough square footage so that there will be a net no change to the impervious surface. Now, full disclosure, there was a pre-existing non-conforming condition in that as it already had existed, there was more impervious surface than required by the ordinance, but it's not going to be made any worse by this application. With that being said, I'd ask...I have my client here to answer a few questions that the engineer had and any other questions that the board may have.
Just a question. Do you have your engineer here tonight?
My engineer called in sick about an hour and a half ago.
Okay. A lot of things in the engineering letter.
If it's an issue, we can return. Obviously, we don't want to do any...push anything through that's not...
I'll tell you, yeah, I can't see with the...with a project without having an engineer to be...
Literally...
I understand. I get it.
I apologize to the board, but literally he called in late this afternoon. There literally was no time to do anything other than show up.
They could...I mean, if you want...they wouldn't have to necessarily renotice, but maybe the people who are here from the public, if you want to give them the opportunity since they showed up, that way you might know what the issues are.
Okay.
You'll have the letter and if you have any other issues, you can maybe address them before.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. This way the public can address it. And you're right. If they're not able to come back, at least if they're advanced, you know, the applicant is also here in the public in concern. So I have no problem with continuing with the public portion, but it's difficult without your engineer being able to answer questions.
Understood and I agree. You know, I certainly planned on him being here.
We'll open it to the public. We'll hear those comments and at that time we'll close and hear them next month and then renotices won't be necessary.
And if you want to talk about the engineer's review letter tonight, it's not...I'll have time to.
Um, they're going to...all right, let's hold this because there would be no way for them to respond. So let's...all right, just have my understanding, a motion to open the application to the public.
Motion to go into public.
Move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in public session on application PB 2212. If anyone wishes to speak.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the planning board. My name is Harold Atkinson. I reside at 1112 Fryes Mill Road. I'm directly across the street of the Byers property and...
Don't test me about the guilty truth, nothing but the truth, selfie guy.
I do. Thank you. And I guess for the record, since they will be coming back, I would just like to address a couple of items on the engineer planning review letter. And if we go to page two, they are requesting a variance for the lot cover or the lot size. Minimum of two acres per building used for industrial purposes is required where a second building is proposed on the lot, which would require a minimum of four acres. The existing lot is 2.1 acres in size. A variance is required. And that's item 3A on the engineer's report on page two. Now, we jump over to page five. The planner has also said that the applicant...and again, under the planning comments on page five, section five on A, applicant must provide testimony addressing the proposed use of the pole barn. I would like to see that. That should be covered by the board and by the engineer. The applicant requires several bulk variances and design waivers to permit the project as proposed for any bulk variance, both the positive and the negative criteria must be satisfied. I think the biggest challenge is the negative criteria, which is two under B. Negative criteria, it must be shown that the variance can be granted without substantially harming the surrounding community and the variance would not substantially impair the intent of the zoning ordinance. Now, the Byers zone is Zone B. I'm across the zone, across the street in the RA zone. And I think it's imperative of our township, of our planning board, that when we have two zones that intersect, that we ensure that the most offensive zone kind of blends or protects the adjacent zone. And therefore, again, going back to meeting that negative criteria, if we jump over to page three and under the completeness review of four, and as we go down, the applicants requesting waivers for architectural floor plans, applicants requesting waivers for the lighting plan, applicants requesting waivers for a landscape plan, to ensure that this project would meet the negative criteria. And I don't know how the board would actually see that the applicant is meeting their burden and satisfying that negative criteria without seeing these additional plans, the landscaping plan, lighting plan, and the architectural plan. We don't know what the building's going to look like. We don't know how high the building is. I haven't seen any height listing on any of the plans. Therefore, I think it's important that we have those plans. And just because of the history of the site there, this building was built back in the early 1970s. It was used for warehousing and retail. Then it became standard maintenance, used for warehousing and retail. Now the site has completely changed. It's being used for, I guess, storage for the Byers operation and maybe vehicle maintenance in one section of the building. We should establish what this addition's going to be used for and make sure that what the addition's going to look like and the architectural plan would provide that. Right now, none of us know. I don't know as a neighbor and the board doesn't know, you know, how they could possibly meet that negative criteria without seeing these additional plans. So that is my main concerns. In the request for the impervious cover, I think that they can cover that without any difficulty, but the biggest portion is the bulk variance they're requesting for overdeveloping the site. But again, the landscaping, architectural, and the lighting issues. The lighting out there, as that...for many of that, from the 1970s until the Byers took over that building, that building had two mercury vapor...two 300 watt mercury vapor lights on the front of the building and two mercury...300 watt mercury vapor lights to the south side of the building. Today, there's LED lighting all over that site. When I sit out in my backyard at night, I can see the outline of my home in the woodline behind my house. There's so much light spillops from that site or to that property. Now, when the Byers organization first came over there, I did go over there and talked to them about the lighting and they did make some adjustments. And as good neighbors, they did the best they could, but it's changed over time. And I think it imperative of our board to establish everything in writing and on paper. This way, there's no enforcement issues in the future. Everyone knows exactly what they're supposed to do with the landscaping, the lighting, and we know long-term what should be out there. Again, I served on the zoning board here in the township for 20 years. I've served on this planning board and I've been a member of township committee in the past. One thing we had years ago, we had a site plan review advisory committee that would meet and go over some of these plans and hash some of this stuff out before they came here. And I would think, you know, again, not to want to, you know, tell anybody how to do anything, but if they had the opportunity to sit down with a site plan advisory committee and work some of this stuff out ahead of time before they come to the board, because it's not fair to the board to try to hash some of this stuff out at the meetings. It's nice to have everything on paper and again have their engineer here this evening. So again, I've noted my concerns of this application as it moves forward. And Mr. Chairman, I would hope you would leave the public portion open so the event that the next hearing, we would have the opportunity to also be heard in the event that these waivers aren't addressed correctly.
I can assure you that when the application moves forward, next month or whatever point, Zendo will be in the public portion. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to close, open public portion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that public portion remained. You'll open it again for the...
I'm going to open it, yeah. Yes. I'm not leaving it open for a month. Yeah, we're going to reopen the public portion at the next...at the next hearing, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yep. So we'll return next week, next month with our engineer.
So everybody's aware of what that date is if they're...
Yeah, somebody...
For Tuesday night.
Yeah, I know. You're in your A games tonight, Brown.
Sixteen.
Oh, I'm sure. We would have been able to address many of them tonight, but it would be...we definitely would prefer...
It would be great if everybody came back on the same page.
Yep. We will come back prepared to address all the Mr. Atkins' concerns.
And we get in on an updated plan would be even...
We'll talk to the client and the powers that be and we'll try to take care of it.
Thank you.
All right.
Because that negative criteria you're going to have to meet, so...
I got you.
We're going to need to address it. Go ahead.
One comment. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but it appears the county has been doing improvements along the frontage, so your elevations, I would just confirm that those are still applicable. So I don't know what the...we'll be able to have a curve as that.
Okay.
I would also request if you're going to provide any supplemental information, whether that's landscaping, lighting, or architectural plans, to address the comments we just heard, that you can provide it to us in advance of the meeting and we have a chance to look at them.
Will do. Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have that date?
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Okay, next application is PB 2302, Hapik, 1284 Washington Avenue.
Good evening.
I'm going to ask Michael to swear again, please.
I'm ready.
Don't test me about the guilty truth, nothing but the truth, selfie guy.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Why don't you give us a overview of what you're attempting to do here?
Subdivide. I'd like to give my daughter and my son-in-law an acre and a half to build eventually.
It's slightly more.
Oh, okay. It's a little bit more. I didn't know.
It's 1.67, I believe.
1.67.
Trying to familiarize myself. What's New York Cross Street on Washington?
It would be Fryes Mill, Washington.
Okay.
Grant on one side, Academy on the other.
Got it. Okay. Let's see. And why don't we start with you reviewing your letter here so we get a little review of what's going on?
Let's start.
Chris, sure, sure. There's not much to say about this. This is essentially a by right subdivision there. In the RA district where a minimum of 1.5 acres is proposed, they've got an existing property that is four acres in area. They're going to split it, not quite down the middle because it isn't a regularly shaped lot, but create a new lot that will be 1.66 acres and the remainder lot would be 2.3 or actually 2.4 acres. The existing lot on the west side currently has a house on it. The new lot would be vacant as proposed, so we're assuming that eventually you'd want to build a house on that new lot.
Yes.
Okay, which would be permitted in that zone. It looks like on the new lot, there is plenty of space to build a house without that home needing any sort of bulk variances and should easily meet all setback requirements and coverage requirements. There's plenty of space there. No bulk variances are required. No design waivers at this time either because it's just a minor subdivision, so it's a new invisible line being drawn through the middle of the property. I did have just one...I shouldn't even say comment, but a suggestion as to where you're drawing the new boundary line and how you came about that. I'm just curious, because you have an existing line of trees out there that has gone perpendicular to the road?
I'll give them land, but I'm not giving them my trees. They're mine.
Mom has food.
Well, it wasn't necessarily suggesting you give them the trees, but you...just in terms of if the line was parallel to that line of trees, it'd be easier to tell in the future exactly where the property line is because you've got the trees here at one way and then this is coming in at like a 10-degree angle to where the trees are. Just a suggestion. There's nothing...no requirement that you do that.
All right, I'll look at the stakes and see. I have looked at them. I thought they looked straight to me, so.
I think what Chris is saying is I think that you're talking about this tree row right here, the row of trees.
So the row of trees that you have right here is in a straight line and your actual property line is at an angle, so it's the same. It's almost like this. Really, it's just a suggestion.
Okay.
It seems like the way this line was drawn, it's parallel to the other, your existing side lot line, which is at a little bit of an angle from the street, but your row of trees is completely perpendicular to the street. That's just a suggestion of, you know, five, 10, 20 years in the future, that, you know, say both the seller properties, the new owners, when you have a nice line of trees already there, makes it easy to tell. The trees are my side of the property, your property is right on the other side of those trees, whether you put a fence up or anything like that.
Okay.
But it makes the other lot a rectangle. I mean, if it's parallel on the line, if you have a line at that moment.
Yeah. I mean, it's a regularly shaped lot one way or another. Neither lot is going to be perfectly rectilinear, but that's just a suggestion of knowing how neighbors interact with one another based in the future at some point. It's not two family members right next door to each other. It makes it easier to tell whose property is where the line is.
I see what you're saying.
It's also entirely possible that row of trees isn't going to be there forever either, although it sounds like you want to keep them definitely.
Yeah, I want them on my side.
If not, we'll just plant some and shift them a little bit.
Move that line over. They'll have to maintain.
I thought of that. I did think of that.
I only have one minor comment. More of a question, actually. Note number seven says the site will be, as every property in Franklin's going to be serviced by a well and an onsite septic. Has any soil evaluation been done to confirm suitability for the site?
May I interject on that part, like sworn in or...
Yeah, me too.
So I did contact South Jersey engineers ways back. Just this whole subdivision and building is new to me. He kind of ran me through as far as the perk test and septic engineering. Haven't signed any kind of contracts or anything because we wanted to get past this part first. I don't know if that's sufficient enough or...
Yeah, it's just more of a question, just, you know, to make sure you're able to build them a lot.
Right.
I got another question.
Have we come across any properties in Franklin that we've heard?
That I've seen? No. Not that I've seen. There's areas of the property.
Based on the soil type, they were pretty confident there wouldn't be an issue.
Generally speaking, I have not.
Mike, this doesn't...we don't need to open this one to the public, correct?
There is no notice of riders or any variance.
I'll make a motion to approve CFRP 0104.01.
Second. All right, I have a motion, a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Tabouin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, our third application tonight is PB 2301, Newfield National Bank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dale Taylor. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey with offices in Mickleton, New Jersey, and I'm here representing Newfield National Bank. Now, this is very briefly...
Wait, hold on one second.
Yep.
Michael, I'm going to have to recruit myself, ask the vice chair to run the meeting at this point. I am conflicted. I'm conflicted.
You're a gomber. You're wrapped up in too many things.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. This is an application for preliminary final major site plan approval with one variance exceeding impervious coverage and some design waivers. The subject property is located at 219 Delsey Drive. It's a branch of Newfield National Bank, block 4733, Lot 8. We've already submitted and have received county approval dated 3/28. There's no impact on county roads and/or county facilities. Also, we received certification from the Gloucester County Soil Conservation District as well. Notice the 200-foot property owners and the South Jersey Times has been achieved. I've submitted the affidavits for both to your attorney here.
Your notice was properly provided.
Yeah, may I say, the last time I was here, it's got to be about 18, 20 years ago, and the only one that's still here is this guy. So he must be doing something right. I have five boards and I have pretty long tenures on those as well, but I just want to comment, Mr. Borelli here.
So, Mr. Borelli, we do not need to swear anything to the other?
No, I'm an attorney. You're going to...I'm going to have two applicants, two people testify and they'll be sworn in. So the first one I have is Mr. John Borelli Jr. He's the president and CEO of Newfield National Bank and he will be testifying as a fact witness. Then I have our engineer, Steve Philippone, Engineer and Design Associate, Ocean View, New Jersey. He's a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. So if you want to get them both sworn in at this time.
Sure, I'll test me about the guilty truth, nothing but the truth, selfie guy.
Yes, I do.
Mike, I have a question.
We're running out of Ben. I don't really...but you're not in an issue.
I don't have anything pending with that.
I don't have anything pending with evidence.
Okay, yeah, but alone that's...
Nothing for the last couple of years.
You're on litigation, you're not getting court.
No, there's anything like that. Okay. Never had any late payments for the name of the...
Okay. We're okay, I appreciate you, bringing you out.
Okay, so we'll get them...
Mr. Sworn in?
Yeah, get you sworn in.
We're good.
Okay, you just did that?
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, man, I'm...
They do things quick here.
Get interrupted here. Okay, first of all, I'm going to ask Mr. Borelli just briefly to provide some background information and the status of that property, that branch, and in general, what you are doing and why you're doing it.
Sure. Come on. Very simply, very large, I'll call it the football field in front of the building. It's very large lawn. I want to improve the parking accessibility handicapped elderly customers like myself, senior citizens. There's a security component that I'd rather not discuss publicly, but there's some security concerns that we could alleviate by changes in parking for employees and putting them in some different locations, so they're better covered with our surveillance system. So that's pretty much in a nutshell, unless you have something specific, it's simple parking lot.
Well, moving on, if he has some, he's available. I do want to indicate that your engineers deem the application complete. I don't know whether you require a second vote on that or proceeding.
They recommended being complete, so really we'll accept that recommendation.
This time, I'd like to have Mr. Philippone.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Bruno to accept the application as complete.
Okay.
Second.
Phil, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Philippone?
Yes.
Will have you outline what we intend to do here and so forth, and then we can go to the board engineer's review letter, which we've received already.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members have seen our site plan. Everybody's, I'm sure, quite familiar with the intersection of Delsey Drive and Malaga Terrace. Just want to point out, Malaga Terrace is a cul-de-sac, there's 13 houses that exist on Malaga Terrace. Area Shining and Brown is the Newfield Bank branch office. It was dedicated in 1971, it's 52 years old. So for 52 years, the site has functioned, it's worked well, it's got entrance on Delsey Drive, two drive-through lanes, it has the exit on Malaga Terrace. So it's functioned very well. Newfield Bank came to me and said, in the fall, they said, we would like to construct a parking lot in that very generous grass area in front of the building. For safety reasons, we'd like to get our customers a little closer to the front door. And it just really made out very well the way the property sits in the area. So our application is about what the context is. It's a 35-stall parking lot currently, and we're going to pick up to 49 stalls. So it's an increase of 14 parking stalls for this property. From a stormwater standpoint, the increase in impervious coverage is .11 acres. And your ordinance and the DEP and your MS4 permit that you have in the state does not require any stormwater basins or drainage facilities when you have less than a half an acre. Like I've said, it's .11 acres, so we do not need a stormwater basin for this project under your counter rules and under the regulations of DEP. We do have a wetland area to the north, it's a drainage swale. All of this water naturally goes in that direction. We're not changing the drainage patterns. We're not applying for DEP permit because we have interviewing development of a parking lot here. We're greater than 50 feet away from that threshold of wetlands, and so we are not going... It was questioned in the report that, are we applying to DEP? It's my professional opinion that it's not regularly applied DEP because of the interviewing development and so forth. As far as any other site improvements, my site plan calls out, there's three large trees on the property along the front. My site plan calls for those three trees to be removed and replaced with more current street trees. We want to amend that. Your engineer approached me before the meeting tonight and said, is there any way we can leave these three trees? When I drafted up this site plan in the fall, one of the trees had no leaves and the other two were weaved down. So I made the decision to remove those three large trees, but after speaking to Mr. Borelli a few minutes ago, we'd like to amend the application and comply with the recommendation of your planner and your engineer and leave those three mature trees in place. We also have some other low-level landscaping on the property. And the reason I say low, we want it low because we want a lot of safety factors here, a lot of visibility. So we do have some landscaping. We have three lights that are shown on the site plan, and they are LED lights with shields on them to direct the lights directly down. No light is going to leave, there's isolux lines on the plan, so no light is going to be offensive to any of the neighbors in the area. That's basically an overview of the project. As far as waivers and variances, we need one variance, and that's for lot coverage. Right now, the site is at 58% lot coverage, impervious coverage, and we're going to 69 with this application. So that's a request for the various requirement. And I would protest that this drainage area to the north of the site could easily handle that increase in runoff. It's a very slight increase, and that impervious coverage can be accommodated easily with the existing drainage facility there. Some of the other safety features, we have two handicap parking stalls in the front, we have a sidewalk. All the other components of our site plan are conformed to your ordinance. Your engineer in his review letter on the last page pointed out a couple of minor modifications to our details, which we'd be happy to make. So I think we're pretty much on the same page as your planner and your engineer. There's three waivers that we need with this application also. There's a requirement for curving and sidewalk. There is curving along Delsey Drive. We do not have curving along Malaga Terrace. We would request a waiver of curving on Malaga Terrace and sidewalk on both street franchises. Your engineer also looking for question the width of this driveway. The existing driveway that's been there for 52 years is, you know, he's questioning that that doesn't conform with your ordinance, and I would attest that this building's been here for 52 years. I don't expect an increase in new customers because we're building the parking lot. This parking lot is for the benefit of the current customers. It's not a heavily traveled area, like I mentioned. There's only 13 houses on Malaga Terrace. So we feel as though that non-conforming driveway needs to be wide. It's been a standard for 52 years, and I believe that the patrons and the customers are familiar with that driveway. And it's my opinion that that driveway, as wide as it is, is still a safe driveway because of the neighborhood that this falls in. Some of the planning testimony that was requested, some of the positive and negative criteria. I think the positive criteria is that we're providing, proposing a safety feature here, a parking lot, to the benefit of the customers, to get them closer to the front door. As far as the negative criteria, this bank is in the, we're in the Malaga Village District. It's a permitted use. Parking lots permitted in the front yards in this district, and this is of no consequence or change to your zone plan or permission to plan. So it's my opinion that, from a planning standpoint, this meets all the criteria of an application that the board could easily approve if they feel we met the proofs. That concludes my testimony.
I want to mention that I've used this building many times. I've had no problem getting into the lobby or the drive-through. Right now, it seems to be functioning very well.
Thank you.
Ed or Chris, do you have any comments on...
Yeah, let me start on this one, Chris. So I know...
I was going to say, if we could possibly go through each item, so I make sure I cover everything on the letter. You don't jump around.
So, yeah, I'll go through real quick to, I'm not going to cover items E through J as Mr. Philippone spoke about before. We had a previous conversation, and we're willing to address, I just want to go through A through D real quick. So while the DEP does not require anything less than a quarter acre of impervious to be, let's say, you know, captured within a basin or some form of a BNP, the township ordinance as referenced in our letter requires that any increase of peak runoff is to be addressed. And within the stormwater report, and actually also on, after we had our conversation, I was looking at the plans, on the cover sheet, the variance that you're seeking for maximum impervious surface of 50% except for coverage may increase to 65%. Provided the app demonstrates dissatisfaction to the approving authority that there's known as increase of preconstruction conditions of volume rate of stormwater runoff. So I understand it's not a significant amount, and I believe, you know, one, I think you would need to ask for a waiver. But in terms of, you know, addressing the comment, and I actually have a further comment which may help address that, I don't see it as a significant burden to address. Now, then that's kind of covered B as well. Now with the driveway, our offices have an issue with the driveway opening itself. The main concern is the circulation pattern that is currently coming off of Delsey Drive. You come off of Delsey Drive, as I just did this earlier. Come off of Delsey, you're going through the drive-through, then you exit out Malaga Terrace, and then you make your left or your right. Now, you're going to have the ability to come in either way, and you can, you know, your circulation pattern is going to change. So the concern is that you're going to have people coming from where the front parking area is trying to come out Malaga Terrace while you're coming around the drive-through, and it's possibly a collision along the location. So I don't know if it's been considered of potentially adding some sort of like striping to help, you know, I guess, circulate the traffic accordingly.
I don't want to get wrong.
No.
You know, you could maybe put a stripe here. For anybody exiting the drive-through could sort of get a straight pattern out there, and then anybody if they, you know, leaving the new parking lot, it gives them a lane to travel. That was an excellent idea.
So, and then the last one, which we briefly discussed, and I think Chris had a few comments on this, is the landscaping. I understand the security concerns. The landscaping where the three large trees are going to look to be saved now, is there a possibility that, you know, additional buffer planting may be able to be provided to help with potential headlights, you know, that would be going into Delsey Drive? That's something that could be accommodated?
I would have to ask Mr. Borelli. John, are you okay if we...
If we need to... Yeah, as long as it's not close to the building, and again, for security concerns, if it's away from the building, I have no issue with that.
All right. There is one house directly across the street, so... And if you're looking for some landscaping, just to block those headlights, I don't want to create like a...
No, no.
...large, but just to block the headlights.
I don't know if you... I don't think there's nothing taller than, you know, 40 inches, something like that.
Okay.
Three to four feet at most, you don't want. I mean, if you did green giant armor biting, it'd get to be 15 feet tall, and you're blocking headlights, and you're entirely blocking the front of the bank, which makes it self its own security concern because no one outside of the site can see it, and you don't want that.
I'm sure we could work something.
All lion shrubs and pushes, you know, a hedge row essentially.
Okay.
Anything along those. If I could just add one thing, where the driveways are now, that's where the headlights are shining. I don't think this parking lot is going to change where the people are exiting, so I don't think there's any differential that's happening now to be in the future. There's no, if those houses are getting headlights, they're getting them now, they won't be getting them in the future.
It's more where the vehicles would be parked in the park there, that's it. Now, one of my other, I guess, comments in this may address A and B, is was it considered to where you have the parking spots? One, I had a question about the amount of parking spots you need, but the actual, when you come in off of Malaga Terrace, you see how you're going to, essentially, your circulation plan's going to continue where the new parking would be? Has it been considered eliminating, I guess, the four or five spots over there to eliminate some of that impervious coverage, which may eliminate the peak runoff increase?
We prefer to keep that parking. We think the customers will... If there's any more than 14, they're going to come to the install here. These will remain vacant back here, but we'd like to leave the site just the way it is.
That's a good, that's all my comments. Thank you.
First, where do we leave the stormwater management? It's okay for you?
I mean, they either need a waiver or they dress it. I don't, and I'll allow Mr. Philippone to comment. I don't think it's a significant amount of water that can't be addressed, even it might even be addressed by adding the additional plantings. So...
Adding plantings does reduce runoff. And I'll say that all of the pattern, natural pattern of runoff coming from the site is all going over into this wetland area here. There's storm inlet out here on Delsey Drive, so none of the patterns are changing. I don't see the benefit of putting any kind of stormwater trench or stone trench or basin to accommodate that peak runoff is what your ordinance talks about. So I would stay with the request for a relief in that department.
A waiver.
A waiver.
So we're going to consider whether they use...
So officially, you have, we'll request a waiver?
For the minimal increase.
For the minimal increase in coverage, peak rate of runoff.
All right, I've got just a few additional comments. One, I would note that as it relates to stormwater management, since the variance, the only variance they are seeking is regarding exceeding the impervious coverage. But my great dear decision on whether or not they grant that variance, they're not necessarily addressing stormwater, even though under the strict DEP regulation, they might not have to do anything. But that could factor into your variance consideration. I do have to say, thank them that they, I was expecting to have to argue about it for at least a minute, two minutes about the trees, but they've agreed to save the trees. That saves us all a couple of minutes there. We do always bring up our concerns, but, you know, give them praise when they're doing things that we asked for, so. Thank them for that. On the assumption that the trees can be saved, you're going to be constructing pretty close to their root structure. So hopefully, you can do as much as you can to maintain those trees, because they are big mature trees, but the new plantings would take essentially 50 to 60 years to get to what those are right now. Just a few design waivers. They don't have sidewalks proposed, although there aren't any existing sidewalks on Delsey Drive anywhere in that area and Malaga Terrace also does not currently have sidewalks. Same thing with curving. That will leave them for the design of the park, because that's the existing condition essentially. Go through all of our comments, so I have to address the positive and negative criteria. Okay, so nothing is required for DEP, in his opinion. Set the bridge of safer trees. Mentioned wetlands, address the lake. Sidewalks and curves.
But if I said across the street from the bank, there's a big basin, there's a big basin in that area.
It's part of the same watershed area, it runs, it's part, there's a lot of farms in this area, so it's across the street.
That area, Delsey Drive, does a lot of that drainage in that basin?
It does.
Really, the only other question I have is, you know, looking at this and what I typically see from banks these days, they don't have a lot of people going to the bank. I'm just curious as to why the need for so much parking, where you've already got 30-something there. And the additional parking, I understand it's a security concern, not necessarily that your parking is currently getting overflowed and that you just need additional space for the capacity. It just seems like a lot of parking for what is typically a small generator of parking demand. Okay. Yeah. Way before my time when it was built, the parking that is that surrounds that building has probably never been used. It was waste, it's too far away for employees to park, it's too far away for customers to use on a good day or an inclement day. So I would almost sarcastically write off that parking, it's there, it just, it does us no good whatsoever. It's there if 50 customers came in, but a normal day, it's just too far for people to walk. And the original construction of it, I wouldn't have put all that parking out there.
Yeah, and I want to add to that emphasis, reasons that we've experienced. The distance becomes a security factor for our employees to park, come to work, and then to go after the bank is closed to that far area. And it's a significant issue we have, and this is the way we can solve it.
And I want to say that I know the bank is going to maintain these parking stalls that may never get used. The bank maintains the properties very well. So I know it will maintain areas that aren't used, so we don't have to be concerned with, you know, abandoned, you know, it will be maintained.
More like curiosity a minus, but you don't even see people coming in asking for more parking when they're not using the motion parking there to have.
Basically, the parking spaces to the north are not utilized. However, as Mr. Philippone has indicated, they actually aid in the drainage of the parking lot to convey the water to that creek or branch.
That's right, that's correct.
I have one question. You mentioned that the, when you inspected the property, there, there are three trees up front, two were leased out, one was bare?
One, one was bare, and I, I went to the site in early November. That's why I made a recommendation, let's, let's remove the three trees. But there, there's leaves on the trees right now, it's a lot.
I was just going to ask if that one was bare, is it, is it alive?
It's alive, it is, and there's, there's, there are leaves there, and when you can save a large tree, you, you should save a tree.
There are any more questions from the board?
Is the existing drainage well? Is it, does it have the capacity to pick up the stormwater?
Yes, very much so, yes.
Any more questions?
So, there's no wetlands issue with this, I know there was some reference on the environmental report about LOI and some reference in the.
So, no LOI required?
So, there's nothing changing with, do they require that? Are you okay with that?
That was, I think Chris touched on that.
Yeah, I mentioned the very northern end might have some wetlands, so they're, they're not, the new parking is not disturbing any wetlands.
We have, we're not disturbing wetland, wetland bump, there's intervening development, and that is a wet area, that's, that's a drainage area for the, our property, and mostly for Delsey Drive.
And the lighting is motion? The lighting is directed down and it's on timers?
Yes.
So, at this time, if there's no questions from the board, is there a motion to go into public portion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
We are now in an open public portion, does anybody want to come forward?
Good evening, Barbara Halpern, Harding Highway.
It's your left, you.
Did I raise the right? Okay, sorry.
Excuse me, she's speaking up to try and get the last name.
Halpern.
Okay, thank you.
I do. Okay, I'd like to look at the plan for a moment, since I didn't get a chance to. Well, where's the septic system? That's a lot of parking. I'm assuming this is all of the new parking, so where is it to introduce all of this?
It's along the back of the property here.
Okay, and the well?
I do not know where the well is, but I do not know of the well. The well, I actually had a question of the well, it's actually right next to one of the curb, curb returns on the northern side.
Does that mean there's pavement over it?
No, no, based off the plan, it shows us it'll be a curb in part of it.
There's no buffer whatsoever to the neighbor that lives right here?
No, it's been that way for 52 years.
Okay, but yet, we don't really need the extra parking, and was I correct in hearing that the drainage goes this way?
No.
Yeah, okay.
The drainage goes this way towards the storm inlet, and part of it goes towards that storm inlet, and like the rest of it goes across the park, asphalt parking lot directly into that drainage area.
And what is the distance from this, where we're airing?
Seventy, 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 seventy-two feet.
Yeah, I mean, we have an impervious coverage issue, obviously, and I'm glad they're saving the trees, thank you for that. My only question is, why couldn't we eliminate these and, you know, create less impervious coverage, and maybe give some landscaping to where the house would be like here, right? It's close to, to block that house by eliminate, you know, even if we cut it this far, that along here, we could give these people a lot better situation than what they have now.
I'm not wanting to get wrong. I, I think there was testimony that you're, you're not going to see parking in these areas, so the hardship will be if cars were parked here so close to a resident, but it's, it's an area that won't be used.
Right.
There won't be any activity, there won't be noise, there won't be car engines, there won't be doors closing, so in, in effect, there, there is a distance buffer. This is the back of the bank, it's the quiet side, which trying to get the activity into the front door, building acts as a buffer, we, we would really like to maintain the plan and leave that parking.
What I'm looking at is, if I lived here, right, I would have a problem with, you have cars coming and then idling at the drive-through window, right, isn't that here?
Yes.
Yeah, so you've got noise and you've got exhaust, which sometimes can be pretty bad, and so this person's enjoyment of their yard would be so much better if at least they had some kind of vegetative buffer to try to stop the exhaust. There's a big difference in my yard, and I live on 40, now that the trees are leased out, versus all winter long, in how much exhaust is coming at me. So, you know, for the improvement of the neighbors and the neighborhood, just cutting this, removing this, and, you know, backfilling it with, you know, good arable soil, and putting some kind of buffer, except where the septic might be, is it acceptable or is it?
I, I don't know. We're not, we're not increasing.
Right, but because you are increasing it, it gives an opportunity to make up for some of it, and to make things better for the neighbor, since we're going to go in there and add all this, it just seems like a good idea, and it, it's a, given better neighbors to those people that live there.
Barbara, I can tell you, as, I, I had the same question that the engineer had, you know, I'm also a banker, and I know that far fewer less people use branches today, John, I'm sure you figure, keep track of how many customers are coming in today, it's probably half of what it was just three or four years ago. So, and I'm very familiar with that branch. There's not a lot of traffic that's running past that house to the left there, and there's just not, and, and I understand your concern, and I want to make things better for the neighbor, but there was a problem, the neighbor would be here.
Well, I would hope so, if it was me, I'd be here.
It's an existing situation there, and it would be a unnecessary burden, financial burden?
Well, I also, sorry, I find it odd that we're not requiring wetlands for this property. Even though I didn't have the plan, I did send the engineer's letter to Justin Arsenault, who's a wetlands expert, and that's what he does for a living, he's an environmental consultant, and he wrote me back, and I should have printed it out, but I really didn't expect that you'd be waiving the wetlands tonight. He basically, his comments were that there should be a LOI, and that there should be a flood hazard area or a 100-year flood plan. And when I looked at the county map, I, it was labeled Scotland Run. Is it part of Scotland Run? Gentlemen?
It would be a, it would be general.
Right, that's the way it was labeled on the county GIS map. And, you know, the, the basin you talk about across the street that this drains into, never drains, it's always pretty much almost at the surface of the ground in that farm field. So, you know, I'm not saying that we can't handle a little more runoff, but it is cumulative for every site we make, and I think we need to go to wetlands, and I don't know why we wouldn't, and we have liability if we don't, as a township. So, you guys decide, thank you.
I, I likewise take the risk when I represent that we do not need a permit because of the intervening development, and, and I take, I accept the liability if the board, you know, grants that waiver. My neck is on the line with my license.
But we don't know if it's going to be a 50-foot buffer or a 150-foot buffer.
It wouldn't matter, because, like I said, there's intervening development, DEP had, they, they allow development, development or exist, same thing in Pymant, Pymant has a 300-foot buffer, but if there's development 150 feet from the wetlands, they, they allow you to build within 150 feet of that wetland, because it's already had, it's been impacted by intervening development, DEP has the same regulations.
If the septic fails, is there adequate space under today's code to replace it with a, a conforming system for the square footage of an office?
We're not, we're not anticipating a failing septic because there is not going to be an increase in employment or any other activity inside the building.
Even though it's 50 years old, and septics generally are designed to last for 30?
I, I didn't evaluate the septic.
Right.
We have, you're municipal, and plenty more engineers and experts at that field, because he reviews every one, it wasn't in his report, so I, I think he didn't have a concern with the septic system, because it wasn't really part of the application. If, if we were adding an addition to the building, I, I would, I would be the first one to recommend to the bank, we have to look at the septic.
Okay, well, those are my concerns, thank you all.
Thank you, Barbara.
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road, Malaga.
Right, that's what you're about to give me truth, I think it would be truth, so I'll be gone.
I do. Hello, everybody, as you know, I've been concerned with development area before, I'm not opposed to the bank. Some of the questions that were raised with the banking industry shrinking is a concern why we would need more parking, I mean, of course, you've, I'm sure thought of this and planned for it, and it just seems kind of an odd investment at this point in time, at least from an outsider looking in, especially being, I'm past the bank all the time, and I think the most I've ever seen in the 25 years I've been here, or 28 years, is 10 cars. There's a lot of extra space there that's, that's not utilized. If we're going to have more water runoff, as you know, Malaga, as well as some other areas, we're in the highest water recharge rate in the state, 11 to 14 inches annually. Any change in impervious surface causes a problem in our area. You check with any septic company in Franklin Township, septics are failing at 68% right now in Malaga, 68%. Ask any of them, Stars, Gravity Flow, any one of them, they'll tell you this, because of the issue with runoff. Groundwater was 14 feet 10 years ago, it's six to eight feet now, first water in Malaga. Most of that is from loss of trees, change in building, water flow not being corrected when problems, as you know, we've got a dollar store near us that we still have issues with. So I'm not sure who the engineer was on that one, and I'm not, if anybody was here, I'm not trying to point you fingers, but it was a horrendous design. The water flow doesn't work right, the lights are, are sickening. I'm hoping, as things move on here in this township, they get done better, because I deal with that.
The water panel is adjusted eight feet.
You, they're hitting first water now at eight feet, some areas six feet in Malaga, as they dig down.
So, it's eight feet different than it was?
Than it was, 10 years ago. Now, a lot of that's from the Fazio property being cleared, at least in, or immediate area, but some of the other areas I don't know about. Every time you take a tree out, it's a lot of work going, a lot of water, as, and I'm playing, those three trees are staying, at least that's part of it, but if we're going to add more impervious, and those back spots aren't used, why not take them out? Add some more, water runoff with some, put some bushes or trees along there, like Barbara had said, and help the people back there. I know they're not complaining, and I know notice was supposedly given, although as of this morning, that had not happened, at least what was shown on our township website, that was still, you know, all this paperwork was not posted for any of this till today.
Well, they made notice, probably noticed that 200 foot left on the newspaper.
Okay, all right, well, this morning it said it hadn't been done, when this plan was put in place, so it just kind of seems kind of odd, you know, that if that's the case, if the neighbors don't know, and if they do, that's great, and maybe they don't want to come out, but a lot of times we get this notification way too late. I mean, it should have been out last week for all of us to have an opinion to review, and not while we're at work. That's not what it should be posted on the website, so I don't know where the ball got dropped there, but that's got to end too. Things have to be done better, I've talked about this at time and time and time again at these meetings. Things have to get improved for the township to get their trust back, and for the residents to feel comfortable with decisions that are made in this township. And instead of getting better, we're, seems like we're still slipping, and I, I don't understand it. There's a lot of good people on different boards, let's, let's get ourselves back together and focus on what we need to do to help the residents, and help businesses grow at the same time. It can be done together, but it has to change. And I'm hoping that whoever does this, of the lighting design, is, I hope is a lot better than the dollar store, and I know there's supposed to be shields, God bless you, and things like that, but as a neighbor that has to deal with that junk from that dollar store all the time, it has to get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anyone else, open public portion? Is there a motion to close open?
From the, from the auditorium, from the top seats, Joe Patch, 2370 Stanton Avenue. I heard testimony, hearing testimonies evening about buffers, obviously, my world is, revolves around security, and we talk about planning mistakes. Right now, every fire department in Burlington County is out on an urban fire because houses are built back in the woods, and nobody wants to cut down trees. So now you have resources out there on a wildfire that they're trying to control and save houses. In this particular case, any buffers, any bushes, any shrubberies, is only adding to the security exposure to a, a bank. We're not talking about a dollar store, we're not talking about putting nice landscaping out in front of a law office, we're talking, we need to call it what it is, it's a bank, and the, the bank has vulnerability, and putting any type of buffers in a area of the bank only allows the criminal element a place to hide. And, you know, with that said, we need to look at it for what it is, and it really doesn't matter whether if the 49 parking spots are filled or not filled, the exposure, the security exposure doesn't change with the number of vehicles in the parking lot. It's all about the, the ability to have the visibility on a 360 of a building, thank you.
Is there a motion to close open public portion? All in favor?
All right. Mr. Chairman, if I may very briefly, I want to thank the people that have come out, just to make it clear, the main reason for the added park in the front is to have a shorter distance for the employees to come, and that is because of a security issue, and we want to protect our employees. They've already had testimony about why it doesn't make any sense to take the, the remote areas in the back and the buffers up. The other thing has to do with the notice, Mrs. Malanius Law requires that notice be done, everyone with 200 feet within 10 days. We've submitted the application, the notice was done even in more time than that, exactly according to the, the list, and also in the South Jersey Times, so we followed the public, the list was filed to a T. And I even had, and I can't remember, I had one person call me about it, because I always, at the bottom, I put my name there, a lot of attorneys won't do that, I think it's a good thing if somebody's got a question, I put my phone number down, and a lady called me about it, and I explained what it was, and she had no problem with it, I just, I think she was out of the area, and maybe just owned property there, but we have complied with that, and I thank the board for your time and attention.
At this time, is there a motion on this application, which is PB 23-01?
23-01. I'll second her.
If I may, I may want to add some language to the motion, in reference to what Mr. Phil upon had said, there was a request to add, motion is made to approve, was exit striping to be added coming out of the drive-thru, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yes, yeah.
Was there a right, so waiver for the stormwater? Is that necessary or no?
And you're formally requesting a stormwater waiver?
Yes. Yes, for peak runoff, no.
Also, the amendment for the, the small 40-inch portions to be, to be planted between trees.
And the other waivers, I assume the motion is covering the other waivers requested in, in the application, the application was all requests.
So, there's been a motion, has there been a second? Roll call please, Ms. Ryan.
Mr. Bruna? Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Prabhan?
Yes.
And Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
Let me see.
Sorry.
All right, so motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the board, we very much appreciate your time, and have a good summer when it gets here.
The meeting is turned over to Mr. Pesh, his chairman.
Open public portion, thanks. This is how I, can you, can you take the public portion? I'd like to address what Barbara had to say about when site plan come in, that we should look at them as a possibility to improve the sites, as that even a possibility.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Varelli, and I'm going to ask Mr. Varelli to answer that from a legal perspective. I was always taught it's not our responsibility to redesign somebody's application, it's the, their professionals and our professionals to work it out, and we're either accepting or denying, now, having the ability to review it and look. And we're either accepting or denying, now, having the ability to review it and look at it ahead of time is all against a different story, but coming up here and doing a redesign of someone's application, other than minor suggestions of buffering or whatever the case may be, the lines and stuff like that, all that was in the realm of the board. Michael, where are we at with that?
Well, whenever anybody makes an application for anything, it does open the door to taking a look at the site, the fact that you're talking about. So say somebody's doing something simple, but the parking lot is broken up and deteriorated in the northwest corner. Well, you can say as part of the application, you know, fix up the parking lot. Or, you know, the sign is falling down, or something that needs to be repaired. So you, or.
Or get a certification on something.
Not if they're not going to be increasing the number, the capacity number of people, you would not have, you're not being required to take them to do that. Something as simple as a change in use, if somebody might think, you know, I'm going to put, what, an existing building is no longer to be occupied as one use but another. You can't take a look at that just for the purpose of parking, because maybe that next use, they need more parking than what's there. So it does open the door, whenever there's an application, to take a look at the site and make some review. But not so far as to say redesign, you know, take a look at your septic, just because you're building a parking lot. No, you wouldn't be able to do that. Unless there's a failure happening, say, an engineer went out and they're walking in. Come on, come on, that's one of the. I think the other thing that was raised, and I'm actually with my, Mr. Addison, was we used to have a subcommittee, take a look at some of these, and then some of them wanted maybe a little bit more involved. That was, that was, that suggestion, that was subcommittee.
And we all have a subcommittee here.
Well, we actually have it ad hoc when necessary. The last time we had a cursory review committee was, in fact, for the dollar store, which was four years ago. It became.
I can say, Ed and I have had discussions with the town administrator about starting again such, exactly such, pre-application meetings, and that idea has been deployed.
I know, it does open itself to possible lawsuits if we increase financial burden above and beyond the applicant is applying for, if we apply to certain things. You refer to it as proven. Yeah, Mike, if we did push.
Creating land. Call a lot of slack about that, right? That prevents, often going in and out. People will curse that. Watching this.
Okay, I have a motion to open the public portion. I need a second.
Second.
Move the second all in favor.
Aye.
Open public portion. Anyone else who speaks this evening?
Hi, I wanted to talk a little more on what Mr. Constantine was talking about. If you had these meetings before the plans were drawn up, as you and Mr. Finley were discussing, wouldn't that be the time to say, hey, you know, you want these variances, and we would like you to put a buffer for the neighbor, or this, or the other thing? You're not necessarily requiring it, you're suggesting it. You're trying to negotiate with the applicant. Isn't that appropriate? Isn't that something that would be possible?
I wouldn't do that for an applications file, because then you're sort of, you know, you're giving people a secret meeting, so to speak, before they even apply.
You know, I would have suggested that 100% if that neighbor, when it came out tonight, he said, oh, we really would like a buffer.
Right.
But I just thought that for that neighbor not to come out, he must be such a good neighbor to them, or do whatever they ask. And I have been by that property. It's always been very well kept. So without the neighbor as the toy, I'm not, I'm not as likely to give it. But if the neighbor was out there today, and she said, look, we really would like a buffer from the bank, you know, we feel so that we, you know, it's something that we would need, I would have recommended that.
I'm sure if that were going to happen. That's an example, say the neighbor was getting headlights all the time, and they just let it go, and they got this notice, then that's their opportunity to come in and say, you know what, I'm getting headlights. And then I'm sure they probably would have done it. But I think the question Barbara was asking was about meetings to try to address some things in advance. So I wouldn't do that with someone who's proposing a development. I think after the applications file, and the letter comes in, then they can sit down and try to work some things out with the engineer with the subcommittee before you come here.
And there's, there's multiple ways it could be organized. It could be developers are, anytime they're allowed to, ask for a free application meeting, or even a conceptual review board.
Right.
And I suppose do technical review committees, or developer review committees in other towns. And sometimes it's before an application has been filed, they submit a concept plan. Sometimes it's after the application has been filed, we all sit down, professionals, the attorney, and the developers professionals. Sometimes it includes a member of the board. And we review it, and we let them know, these are the variances you're needing. We can make some suggestions. We can't force them to do anything. And in terms of things like we're talking about here, there's always a balancing act between somebody's coming in for a minor site plan to make one minor change to an existing property, and there's some existing non-conforming conditions, to try and require everyone to then bring everything up to code is sometimes maybe it hurts some. And when you ask for a lot, then sometimes they just say, forget it, I'm just going to not do anything now. There's always the possibility, as I'll say, this is too much, I'm not going to do anything.
But you can ask them if they would do something. You could make suggestions, yeah.
Something like that would have come in handy if the dollar store, General Dollar, if it liked, if I look back there, it's there.
Yeah, it was poorly sighted on the site, and it's a problem. But, you know, I'm basically under, I try to look at it, I live there. And I hope that the person that lives there isn't sick, out of town, didn't really get their notice, because unfortunately, I got a certified letter this week, and when I pulled it out of my mailbox, the green slip that you're supposed to sign was gone. I didn't sign it. No one else lives in my house, except two dogs. So I'm wondering, you know, who is signing other people's certified mail? And then luckily, it was left in my box. So it's kind of strange. It's never happened to me before. But I do hope that the neighbor did know about this, and if a neighbor couldn't make it, and they could send a letter to you, would that be of value? Because people can't always make the meetings.
They really can't make the meeting, because they have a right to cross-examine a person if they raise an initiative, fast, and fight to that. So a letter is only given so much weight.
Right. But I mean, there are circumstances where someone is ill, or someone is out of town. Yeah, well, hopefully, I guess if someone needed to contact the engineer in advance and talk to them about a problem, or through the administrator, or whatever, maybe some kind of way of getting the message to the board that they can't make it, but they have concerns. So thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, nice to stretch my legs. I'm Mindy Curran, 71 Edgewood Avenue. I'm going to read something I wrote up. While our minds are still tuned into the rural character of Franklin Township, and the topic has been touched on this evening, I wanted to stress the topic of light trespass and light pollution, so that it's on the minds of those working on the master plan, along with implementing a nuisance ordinance. Why light pollution? I'm not much of a night owl myself, except to take my dog out in the middle of the night. But wildlife is dependent on the natural cycle of light and dark. They rely on it for hunting, or hiding, mating, migrating, or just plain old sleeping. Many people don't like mice or voles. Well, if we're illuminating outdoor spaces, private or communal, the owls can't use stealth to attack. I'm sure you've all heard by now that birds on their migrations will crash into windows of lit buildings. Not that we have big buildings, but lights can throw them off course, using up energy reserves that get them to their breeding grounds. And finally, moths. They are suckers for a porch light, spinning and circling, crashing and lingering. They're supposed to be feeding, or mating, or flying, so the bats can eat them. We should care about moths. Without them, the domino effect of other species would be catastrophic. But enough about the end of the world. Brighter lights do not mean safer. On road, on roads, bad lighting creates unsafe driving conditions. Improperly aimed and poorly shielded lights can actually attract criminals, topic that's been, come up tonight, and allow them to see what they are doing. Glare also decreases safety, creating deep shadows, and diminishes our ability to adapt to low-light conditions. Light trespass is a phrase I've come to learn. It's when a neighbor, residential or business, has lights that do not conform to safe lighting solutions. These lights illuminate beyond their property, and even directly into my house, I mean others' houses. There are solutions to these issues. It sounds like there's some awareness of this already, so I'm pleased about that. There are solutions to these issues that homeowners and businesses can and should easily implement. Consider using reflective paints or self-luminous markers for signs, curbs, and steps to reduce the need for permanently installed outdoor lighting. Lights should have cover to target where needed. Use the lowest watt bulb to serve purposes needed. Use warm tone lights instead of shorter wavelength blue-violet tone light. Use controls and sensors to ensure light is available when needed, and to dim when possible, and turn off when not needed. And finally, have a dust-to-dawn darkout. That's it, thank you.
Just real quick, I have a question, and I didn't think of this earlier. Mr. Braly, is there any chance you're related to the Mr. Braly at the bank? Wouldn't that be a conflict?
I am related, but I have no, no stock. I don't have any accounts there, no checking, no savings, no loans.
All right, so the family doesn't account for anything.
I wouldn't say that.
Just asking.
I have no affiliation with the bank at all, but yeah, I'm related.
All right, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Kelly, for bringing up your inquiry about what you had brought up the last meeting. I appreciate you staying on top of that.
I have that letter when they're done. I found it on my emails. I can read it.
Thank you.
Do you wish to read it at this time?
Whenever, whenever you're done with the public portion.
All right, anyone else? Motion to close, please. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Michael, no need for a closed session, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I did not copy this to, we weren't like served in between secretaries, but I did not copy it to either of them, so I didn't want them to be on the hook for. March 27th, I think our meeting was the 21st. Yeah, the 27th, I sent this letter by email to Matt Finley, the administrator, and to Matt Lyons, the solicitor. Read as follows, "As you know, the Planning Board recently considered the potential plan for redevelopment forwarded to them for consideration by the Township Committee. At their regular meeting of March 21st, 2023, the Board asked that I forward this correspondence to you to share with the governing body." And that's the administrator I seem to share. "If in the future, the Township Committee asks the Planning Board to investigate the possibility of an area in need of redevelopment, they ask that the following information be provided." And these are like public points. "Why they have chosen to initiate the investigation, why these specific parcels of property have been chosen, and what potential opportunity for development may be anticipated. The Planning Board thanks the governing body for their consideration of this request. If you have any additional questions, please go to the contact."
That's not what the motion included.
There were three points you made. I think those were the three you asked to.
Oh, well, no, there were two, two distinct pieces. There was one, as it related to future requests, which was correct, which you read correctly. And then the first part was, where did the, you know, the Fazio properties are surprising. People have been interested in that for a long time, it's well documented. The other two pieces, we wanted to find out, well, how did they get, how did they get included in the study for to be considered redevelopment zones? How did that come about? Was there an interest expressed in those, in those pieces of property? That was the answer that we were looking for.
That was number one. Why have they chosen to initiate the investigation? Second, why the specific parcels of property have been chosen?
Yeah, but I think the way you wrote it, it sounds like you started off with, in the future, if the Board has asked for this to do, why were these pieces included? That's for future projects. I'm asking about the other two pieces of the entire study, besides Fazio. So there's three pieces, Fazio and the two other pieces. It's the two other pieces that we wanted to know. And if you go back, Mike, and you listen to the meeting, you'll, you'll understand exactly what it was I motion for.
My, my understanding of it was it was not directed, was for the, if in the future they do this, I want to know this.
Yeah, well, yeah, please refer back to the meeting, to the tape, because that's what this motion for improved.
I didn't listen to it, but my recollection was it was not, we weren't going to rehash why that happened. We wanted to make sure if it happened again, that we.
Actually, no. The reason why it was asked for is, again, the Fazio property is well documented. The other two pieces, there's really no documentation there, so where that came from. And we're trying to figure, we're trying to have it documented, so that if anybody needs to know in the future, if they want to hook it up, where did it come from, why was it included? And that's what I'm trying to get done.
Mike, is there a capture of video or any obligation to answer that report?
No, not obligated, no. I did what the Planning Board asked. Well, Jim's not sure what that was. They don't have to do it now, but that was the request.
No, they don't have to do it, but that's, the question was, I wanted to ask the question. If it did, I want people to want to know the answer.
All right. Mr. Coe, would you set a slide with, Michael, follow-up, a follow-up memo, asking for a response? So we're a month out. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about it. Have you gotten a response from Matt Lyons? From anyone? Have you gotten a response from anybody?
No, because it would, the way I worded it, it was if in the future you choose to do this, this is what we need. I wasn't asking to explain what you did already. That was the difference in the interpretation from what Jim was saying. My understanding was we were asking for, the next time around, make sure you tell us these things, so we know what we're dealing with. So that's the way I interpreted what you said.
No, I understand that's your interpretation, but if you could go back and review the tape, you'll see that this is a two-piece request.
So if the, you know, if the Board wants to take a, listen to the tape, and then tell me to do it differently, I'll, you know, I'll do it differently.
Can you listen to the tape and do it, go ahead and tape?
I could if they'd be.
This way it would reflect.
I'm ready to watch. That was the same understanding that I had, which is why my notes, or why the minutes reflected that, because he said, in the future, if something like this happens.
I'm telling you, I don't know how much more clear I could have been. I mean, you'd need to go back and watch it. It's very clear, and it was a unanimous vote.
I don't know what the Board recalls on that, whether it was future or.
I wasn't here, but I listened to it.
Mike, I second that, and I don't remember the exact voting time. I don't want to comment on it right now. I got it.
You said you listened to it.
I listened to it, and Jim's right. What we were, I believe the point was to find out who requested it, why, and why did it put the Planning Board in such a position that the residents didn't get the answers that they were looking for, exactly. We couldn't answer.
I do whatever the Board directs me to do, so I thought it was, I didn't do that because I was trying to do something different.
I understand.
And I think if you're ready to see the draft of the correspondence ahead of time, then you wouldn't be caught.
Okay, I don't know if it's necessary to listen to the tape, from what I'm hearing, because obviously, the understanding, and I, first of all, I personally don't remember. I remember Jim talking about it, I remember him asking. So whether it was post, or pre, or post, I'm not 100% sure. But I think, quite honestly, it's irrelevant. Are you okay with solicitor, our solicitor, following up with a second letter to the township solicitor, asking for a response to the first letter, and including the fact that, what the question has been posed?
So in other words, do we want a letter saying, in reference to my previous correspondence, the Corruptive Board is inquiring about the redevelopment that was already proposed?
Because I think the tapes are irrelevant. The request is being verbalized here, here right now. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, you did, you attempted to do what I asked for, it's just not completely. All right. Now, I do have one other question, though, and I hate to keep going back at this. When we met in, I guess, in January, approved, or not approved, but made the recommendation for those other two pieces, the Fazio property was thrown out, rejected, because it was said that it didn't meet the state criteria. because it was said that it didn't meet the state criteria because it was disturbed within 10 years. And the disturbed, the disturbed explanation was that it was farmed, it was clear cut farmed, that qualified as being disturbed. I'm just, did, did you guys, did you guys, can we take that to, that would be the recommendation, that that piece should not meet state criteria? Because that, you know, that was part of, you know, when you made your study, when you did your study and you said, all, all three pieces meet the state requirements, and then we meet to talk about the pieces that might make the recommendation, and that piece gets thrown out because it said, well, it was disturbed. How do you, did you confirm with anybody about that or how, how did that decision get made?
Not following exactly what the question.
Well, it was disturbed.
Your recommendation would be put in the form of a resolution that would then go to.
If that was the case, it would have been put in the study.
That's what I'm saying, but that was, that was the reason given for why it was not being recommended. Mr. Doyle?
He gave the reason that.
He said it was disturbed.
You know, he had the opportunity to develop that.
No, it was, it was, no, he said it was, it didn't meet state criteria because it was, it was disturbed within 10 years, within the last 10 years.
If that was the case, then that would have been.
I mean, we haven't amended our report, if that's what you're asking. Our report is the same as it was, if we get it amended.
Yeah, we can hear about it now, but.
Your recommendations as a board would be memorialized in a resolution or within the committee. The committee would be reviewing your resolution, your recommendations as well as the report.
But you didn't, you didn't make a, you didn't make a.
We have not, the report has not been amended.
Right. So, so you stood by that, that property, that all state requirement.
Our, our report has not changed?
Right.
And your recommendation to back to the governing body is whatever the negotiation that night, I wasn't here, my understanding was the other, that, that piece, I think we called it section three, or section.
I, I remember, I referred to Fazio.
The Fazio, that was accepted from a party's recommendation and then the governing body would have to take that into consideration if they were moving forward on it, the planning board recommended that piece not be designated to be the redevelopment.
Just curious, is it, is the question?
No, we haven't amended the report and we haven't made a specific presentation on that separate from what was presented to you all on, on anything.
Anybody else? Anybody else have questions, comments? Good.
Michael Burley's comments on the Fair Share Plan. Have we moved ahead with the conflict solicitor, Mr. Burley?
I wouldn't know, because that's not in my realm since I'm the person has a conflict and the county solicitor has to find that person.
Desiree, just remind the administrator that we still need a conflict attorney for the Fair Share Plan, the township needs to provide a conflict attorney for us.
We, I know for a fact that they are working on it.
Working on it?
Because originally it was going to be back on the agenda for tonight, but the conflict solicitor was not available.
Okay, all right.
And we.
Yeah. So.
We already noticed.
Okay, all right. So, and it's sort of the follow-up, it's in the works, okay. Anybody else? Is that your question, or?
Yes, it does.
All right, all right. At this time, I want to change the motion to adjourn the motion. A motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for coming.